Call to the third regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. City Clerk, please follow the wall.
Counsel Del Russo.
Present.
Counsel Falco.
Present.
Counsel Knight.
Present.
Counsel Longo Kern.
Present.
Vice President Marks.
Present.
Counsel Scott Pelley.
Present.
President Caviolo.
Presence.
Seven present and absent, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
motions, orders, and resolutions, paper seventeen dash zero two seven, offered by President Caviolo. Be resolved that the Memphis City Council commend and congratulate Chris Curtin for his life-saving actions performed on a Memphis resident that he be presented with the council commendation. Be it further resolved that we recognize Shawn Mangan of Armstrong Ambulance and Sam Taborlessi of Hallmark Health for making the life savings classes available. Counsel President Caviolo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, every year, I'm taught a service along with Counselor Falco at the Kiwanis, and this is service put on by Sam Taborlessi from Hallmark Health and Armstrong Ambulance. And what we're taught every year for the past ten-plus years is we're taught CPR, choking, and how to operate a defibrillator. And fortunately, I've never had the opportunity to ever have to use these services, but someone in the audience had to perform CPR on a train going to work one day. And Chris Curtin, Chris, if you want to stand up? Chris, if you come up to the microphone. Those of you who know Chris, Chris is a quiet guy, very reserved. And Chris, if you want to tell the story of what happened on the train, then you can you know a little bit better than me.
Sure, well, I took the training from Shawn the last couple of years, actually. And I was sitting home, the Haymarket Tea Station on Halloween Day, about 2:00 in the afternoon, and John sat down next to me and lost consciousness, was struggling for breath. So, one person went down to the end of the platform to hit the panic button, and I called 9/11. And then John stopped struggling, he stopped breathing. So, I put him down onto the platform of the train and did exactly what Shawn Mangan taught us to do. All of the points, the pointers that he, and teachings that he gave us just kicked right in. And I was able to do, I don't know how long, I was doing chest compressions on John, but the EMTs and the paramedics showed up. I don't know how many minutes it was, if it was 10 or more, but it felt like a lifetime. And I'll tell you, I never felt a more, greater feeling of relief than the moment I saw all the professionals show up and the work that they did. Incredibly impressive. I walked away from that experience really dumbfounded that day, incredibly impressed with the type of work that they do every day without, with very little recognition. So, I'm incredibly pleased that the City Council and you, Mr. President, Mr. Counsel Caviolo, are recognizing Armstrong Ambulance and Hallmark Health, Shawn Mangan and Sam Taborlessi in particular, for the generous volunteer work that they do to teach us this. You never think you're going to need to use this, and I wish, I don't, I hope I never have to use it again, but I'm so happy it worked out. And Pauline, John's wife, reached out to me five weeks after the incident, and she wrote a really nice letter. She got the police report, the T police report, and got my contact information, wrote a really nice card and a beautiful letter, and we got together for lunch. And then the rest kind of took off from there. A colleague of mine in the juvenile court wrote a letter to the Kiwanis, and that's how the counsel, Mr. Rick, you became aware of this. And so, I really appreciate all the kind words, all the flattering compliments that I've received from family, friends, and colleagues. But I really want to point out that the most important, and the people that really deserve the credit and should get all the congratulations are the people like Shawn and all of the first responders, police, fire, EMTs, paramedics. When you see them at work up close and personal, it's just, it's beyond impressive. So, I'm really glad that they're here tonight to be honored by the council.
Thank you. If you could introduce the family? Do you want, if you could, Chris, if you could introduce the family?
Oh, we have Pauline, who was kind enough to...
Chris, Chris, come up here.
...and John.
Who tells me he's recovering nicely, thanks to the paramedics and EMTs and the people at the professionals at Mass General Hospital. And John tells me he's doing well.
John, if you'd like to say something?
No, thank you very much for him and for the EMTs.
Yeah, Shawn, Shawn Mangan, John, if you could stand up, be recognized, and Sam? I mean, those are the guys that make it happen, and they teach us every year because CPR changes every year. And again, you know, I've never had a chance, I've never had an opportunity to use it, and I hope I never do, but yeah, Chris, he learned it, and it came right up. And Chris, I want to thank you. And again, Sam and Shawn, again, Shawn is a great ambassador for Armstrong Ambulance, and Sam is a great ambassador for Hallmark Health, and they're great community partners.
Well, as you can tell, they're incredible, they do not seek out the spotlight, but they really deserve...
They do.
...a lot of credit and recognition.
They do. And John, Chris, I'd like to give you a citation.
Thank you.
The Memphis City Council takes pleasure in awarding this council commendation to Chris Curtin in recognition for his life-saving actions performed on a Memphis resident. The Memphis City Council extends its sincere congratulations on your heroic action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just if I also could, I just want to recognize one of Memphis' own that was just recognized here tonight, Shawn Mangan. He received back, a few years back, a distinct honor by the American Ambulance Association regarding the Boston Marathon. Shawn was a first responder and was recognized nationally, and really, he's done yeoman's work in this effort, and we appreciate Shawn and all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Before we get back, I want to introduce our new reporter for the transcript, Ethan Hartley. He'll be taking over, so I hope to see some good writing from you in the future.
Positive for the writing.
Positive, that's right.
Clear balance.
All right. Sixteen, seventeen, zero, three, zero, offered by Counsel Longo Kern. Be it resolved that the administration reach out to Park Medford with regards to improperly ticketing those who have paid accordingly. Be it further resolved that a representative for Park Medford attend a Memphis City Council meeting of the whole to discuss the issues or problems that are still occurring. Counsel Longo Kern.
Shawn Longo, five. Thank you, President Caviolo. I know that, I think yourself has been requesting that Park Medford come to a committee of the whole meeting or a city council meeting so we could sit down and discuss what has been going on the last several months with Park Medford, especially since now we had, it was sold, bought and sold, and we're dealing with a new contract. As of recent, the complaints have really been coming in. I'm not sure if my colleagues have realized or witnessed the same thing, but one complaint leads to another, and people are now going public with their complaints, which leads to a whole host of issues that bring light to our eyes and make us realize what is going on. It seems like there was a lot of kinks that needed to be worked out and a lot of changes that should have been made with the old administration, but now, the last nine months, it seems like things are going downhill, and I don't know if that's because of the purchase and sale or what's really going on in that office. I hear it's really a disgrace to work with when you go in, nobody has the correct information. I had a complaint this week with regards to somebody who was just going down to get her a parking permit pass. She brought the proper documentation with her to get that pass. They sent her out the door without the pass, telling her she needed A, B, and C. Finally, she went back with somebody that knew exactly what she needed. She had brought the correct documentation the first time, and it was corrected the second time she went in. But she should have been saved that second trip if people at Park Medford knew exactly the rules and regulations and what needs to be collected in order to get that parking permit pass. I've also had several complaints with regards to people that are, one of the big ones that was upsetting was a woman taking her child out of the car, went and paid for parking to head into the Medford Public Library, and paid for parking, and then five minutes later, got a ticket. Once you got that complaint, you realize that several, this is happening to several people. They're paying for parking accordingly, and five, 10 minutes later, they're getting a ticket incorrectly. Now, for that to happen maybe once or twice, it's one thing, but I've got both six complaints with regards to that in the last couple of weeks. So, something needs to be corrected, something needs to be done. Another issue is with regards to when you do get a ticket and you pay that ticket, that should obviously be recorded in some sort of system that Park Medford has. But people have been complaining that they've gone to the registry to try to renew their license, and for some reason, it hasn't been recorded, and those tickets have been improperly sent to the registry, and people have been turned away from the registry not being able to renew their license because it's showing that they had a ticket, although they have their receipts and they've paid for those tickets. So, those are three, three or four different issues that I've got complaints of in the last four to six weeks, and I think I have emailed the chief of police. I know he's helped me with a couple of things, but I've also requested, and hopefully I'll hear back from him soon, I've asked that he specifically talk to Park Medford. I know he was almost the ambassador of what has been going on, and he's done tremendous amount of work to try to get the, within the last two years, to try to get it up and running. But there's just so many improper things that are going on, and people seem to, I don't know if they're not trained correctly, or they're, some people even online are saying that they feel like these tickets are given out of spite at some point. They're joking with the people, saying, "Yeah, of course I'm going to give," you know, it's, what I hear is going on is not right, and we need to get a grasp on it. The chief of police, hopefully, will reach out to Park Medford, but I think it's really important that also this city council sits down and asks the appropriate questions, make sure we let them know how unhappy we are and what our residents are going through. I've got complaints from people outside of the city as well, which, you know, can't be unnoticed, and I hope the administration, you know, is getting these complaints too or, you know, reading up online when things are posted because the administration needs to get a grasp on this. And we, little tweaks were made, I believe, in January, but that's just not enough. What has been going on is people are not happy, and it's, again, it's going downhill, and I think we need to get a grasp on it, and this council needs to take the lead. So, I ask that Council President, we try to get Park Medford down to a committee of the whole meeting so we can sit and roundtable it and discuss what's been going on and the complaints we've been hearing and why they're not being corrected.
We've been asking since January for a meeting of last year.
So, maybe now that you're in control, we can get that done.
Yes, I would say that we should have Dan Nash down here within the next two weeks.
And I think a committee of the whole meeting, just so we have the full hour. And I think he needs to come and talk to the people too publicly because people are not happy. It's really a shame that after two, three years, we can't get it, we can't get it under control, and whether that's because it was bought and sold or what's, I don't know what's going on, but at least people in the office should be educated, and people who are out there giving tickets should be taking the time to make sure they're certain this A, B, and C haven't paid for parking so that they can't, you know, because then people have to, number one, either pay the ticket, fight the ticket, get upset, go to Diane MacLeod to appeal it, go to Park Medford. They have to take time out of their busy schedule, that they could be doing other things to try to fight these tickets, and it's not right.
Thank you. On the motion, second?
Roll call.
Roll calls, second by Counsel Falco, roll call has been requested. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel, Counsel Del Russo.
Yes.
Counsel Falco.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counsel Longo Kern.
Yes.
Vice President Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Scott Pelley.
Yes.
President Caviolo.
Yes, seven of the affirmative, then the motion passes. Motion by Counsel Del Russo to take paper seventeen, zero, two, nine out of order.
Approve.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. One, seven, zero, two, nine, petition for a signed denial reversal by Edward Batten, Batten Brothers, Inc., for Maple Park Condominiums, 65 Valley Street, Medford, OCV application, zero, one, dash, one, seven, exceeds allowable size ninety-four, dash, three, oh, six, dash, five, C. Counsel Marks of the sign committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a gentleman here from, I believe, the sign company.
Yes.
If you can address the counsel.
My name's Ed Batten, work with Batten Brothers Signs, and right now, we're just requesting approval for the size of our signage. Right now, it's at four by six feet, which is, I'm about five foot ten, a couple inches wider than my wingspan, and we feel a sign of this size is necessary for the property where it's located. Maple Park Condominiums occupies the entire building at this, excuse me, at this address, and the business also occupies a whole street block, which comes into close to thirty-four thousand square feet, and we feel as though one twenty-four square foot sign should be acceptable for the amount of space that they are occupying.
Counsel Knight.
Mr. President, this is purely a request to seek variance just based upon the size of the sign. Presently, the current sign ordinance would read that the square footage of the sign cannot exceed twelve feet, so that sign would be six by two. This sign here is six by four, and I think that this is a measure that I wholeheartedly support. I think it will not have much of an impact on the quality of life in the neighborhood by passing traffic, so on and so forth. If you look at the renderings, the sign is about six or so feet off of the sidewalk, Mr. President, so it is an ample setback. Really, all it is is just so that the letters on the sign can be larger, so people can have an easier time reading it, which I think will make it safer, actually.
Thank you, Counsel. Move approval. Counsel Del Russo.
Mr. President, I concur with my colleague. I think this sign will make a wonderful addition aesthetically to the neighborhood, will identify the domicile there in an area that suffers from a brisk rate of traffic with also abrupt stopping at the stoplights at Fulton Street, and this will help people in search of the condo complex. I second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Counsel Marks, the sign chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. This is a newly constructed entrance into the building itself, and it was beautiful craftsmanship done constructing this new entrance, and I see no problem with this particular sign. I think aesthetically, it fits in to the property and the neighborhood, and I would motion for approval, Mr. President.
On the motion by Counsel Marks, seconded by Counsel Del Russo, all those with favor? All taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We have one more, one thing I want, Mr. Counsel Knight. Be it resolved, offered by Counsel Scott Pelley, be it resolved that the council in the, Counsel Scott...
I can't read.
Offered by Counsel Scott Pelley that we get an update on the focus group on recreation. Counsel Scott Pelley.
Ken, thank you, Mr. President. I've been the chairperson for the focus group on recreation for the last three months, and the group has been working diligently, making sure that we are covering all of our bases and making sure that we're getting all the information that the administration would need to bring a full-time recreation department in the city of Medford. The reason why I bring this up, we'll have a full report soon, but this week, we'll be sending out a, the administration will be sending out a survey that we're asking all of our constituents to spend about two or three minutes, and it'll be very helpful to see what, what, not just a few people, not just the 20 people that are on the focus group, or myself, but what most of our constituents are looking for and give us a better idea in which direction we'll go when this council have to make, have to make a decision, and the city administration has to make a decision to allow this wonderful opportunity. So, look out for that. I know that it'll be on the city website, there'll be a press release soon, and they'll be, they'll be doing reverse nine-one-one, I believe, that for all the students in the school systems that will have that online too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Scott Pelley, for all your hard work. Counsel Del Russo.
President, I just want to laud Counsel Scott Pelley and the group who've done great work in advancing a central clearinghouse of sorts for all the recreational entities within the community. It's a great thing that fosters cohesion in our community and provides great opportunity for the young ones and also for parents to get involved and stay connected to the generation coming up. It's a wonderful thing, and I thank the counselor and the group for their good work, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank Counsel Scott Pelley. You couldn't have appointed a better person that has the insight and knowledge already regarding recreation, how a department's established, what the needs are staffing-wise for a city this size, and I look forward to the eventual recommendations and implementation, Mr. President, of a long-needed recreational department in this city.
Thank you, Counsel Marks. Counsel Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank Counsel Scott Pelley for his hard work on this issue. I know him and his committee have been working on this for a while, and they've had a lot of meetings, and I'm hearing a lot of great things. So, I look forward to the results of the survey and the formal report from the committee. This recreation department, in my opinion, and I think you'd agree, is long overdue, and a city of this size, I think, could benefit greatly from a recreation department. So, thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion to receive, oh, Counsel Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Caviolo. I also want to thank the committee and Counsel Scott Pelley. If you could just reiterate, when will the survey be coming out and how will we get, how will we be able to access it? Just, I miss that.
Okay, so, we will have it, there'll be a Survey Monkey attachment on the city's website. We'll have hard copies at a few locations, like the library and some other visible sites, and we'll be doing reverse nine-one-one, so everyone from preschool to seniors have an opportunity to add their opinions and what they feel, or if they feel that a recreation department would do to our community, for our community. And we'll also be reaching out to all the schools via the student sites for their parents and students work together and to get the most information that we can get to make a prudent decision moving forward. So, pretty excited about it. Thank you.
And when should we look at this, and how long, how long a timeframe will they be surveying, like, you know, 30 days?
Well, actually, it should be going out by the end of this week, and we've given two weeks as a timeline to, so it's a coordinated effort with, you know, with reverse nine-one-one, a city's website, and their, the news, news release, and that's what we're looking for for this week, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Knight to receive and place in file. All with favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. Motion by Counsel Knight to revert back to regular business.
I'll brief announce, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, recently, I did have a conversation with our highway superintendent, and he asked that I announce that they will be accepting applications for porthole filling, always through C-Kick Click Fix or through 781-393-2445. Mr. President, the highway superintendent did ask that I announce this at the meeting because they have been out patching.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Knight to revert back to regular business. Seventeen, dash, zero, two, eight, offered by Counsel Knight and President Caviolo. Be it resolved that the Memphis City Council extended steep and sincere condolences to the family of former Memphis High boys varsity hockey coach Charlie Driscoll on his recent passing. Counsel Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Someone, being someone who doesn't know how to ice skate, but who certainly enjoyed watching hockey games growing up, I remember sitting in the stands at La Conti Rink and listening to Mr. Driscoll, Coach Driscoll, coach at the top of his lungs from across the rink, but he did a great job. He really put Medford hockey on the map, and as a child growing up, the Greater Boston League was very competitive in the sport of hockey, and it was always Arlington and Medford battling for the top spot, and then everybody else fell in behind us. And a lot of that had to do with great players, and a lot of it had to do with great coaching. And Mr. Driscoll had a great deal of success here in the city of Medford. I remember my freshman year in high school watching Sean Bates and Eddie Buckley skate at the Boston Garden in the Super Eight Tournament for his Catholic memorial with Coach Driscoll on the bench, and it brings back great memories and very sad to see him go. He was someone that mentored a lot of young men in this community, and he will be sorely and sadly missed, Mr. President. I offer my deep condolences to his family, and I ask that the council join me.
Thank you. Counsel Scott Pelley.
If I can, as a former colleague and fellow coach in the Memphis system, we often sat at meetings together with Coach Driscoll, and we'd be fighting for different awards for our Mustangs, and there wasn't a person that fought harder for their kid, his kids, than Coach Driscoll. He had a charisma about him and an aura about him that you could really appreciate today's world of coaching. He was special, and he'll definitely greatly be missed. He's laid the groundwork for a lot of great coaches today that he has mentored, and he'll be missed.
Thank you. Counsel Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too got to know Mr. Driscoll when I served as a member of the school committee, and I can tell you, he was not only respected in this community, but he was well-respected across the entire state, Mr. President, and as Counsel Scott Pelley mentioned, he always put the kids first, no matter what it was, and he'd go to bat and fight for the kids. And I was at meetings where he would stand up, Mr. President, against school administration and against anyone else that he felt was doing something that was against his students and his hockey players, and I respected him for that, and he will be sorely missed, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Marks. And personally, I've known Charlie Driscoll... And personally, I've known Charlie Driscoll for many years, you know, through the Methadon hockey community, and Charlie is responsible for many kids going to college in the pros, in the big hockey teams. Again, Charlie is a good man, and as I say, Counselor Knight was right, he put Methadon hockey on the map, and again, he will be missed. If we could have a moment of silence, please. 17-031, offered by Counselor Caraviallo. Be it resolved that the Methadon City Council sends its condolences to the family of Ernest Casasa on his recent passing. Mr. Casasa was a Navy veteran, served our country in World War II. Mr. Casasa is a neighbor of mine, and again, his presence in my neighborhood will be missed, and again, if we could have a moment of silence for him also. Motion by Counselor Scott Pelley to take papers in the hands of the clerk. Offered by Counselor Marks. Be it resolved that the owner of Wet Cuts, Kathy Bianco, be recognized for being in business for the past 22 years in the city of Medford. Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. If anyone's aware of Kathy Bianco in Wet Cuts, she was located on Boston Ave for a number of years, and has been in business in this city for over 22 years, Mr. President, and has been an outstanding businessperson in this community, and has serviced thousands of Methadon residents, Mr. President, with a hair coloring, a perm, or a wiffle. She ran the gambit in that particular shop over there, and she is still going to be cutting hair, but will no longer be at that location, Mr. President, and I want to wish her well on her future endeavors. She will be, she was a staple in the Boston Ave area, and she will be sorely missed, Mr. President.
Where she will be to?
She will be on the road, I guess, so she doesn't have a fixed location, but, you know, she had a number of distinguished people in this community. Former president Robert Mayorko got his haircut there, so, you know.
Very quickly, huh?
He was a great customer, very little work, but he got his haircut there, and like I said, Mr. President, it was like the neighborhood coffee shop. Everyone would go in there, get your haircut, make small talk, and I just want to thank Kathy Bianco for her many years of business in this community, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And receive a council citation for years of service.
Yes, thank you. We will, if you'd like to invite her up here in the next couple of weeks, we can get, we can get her a citation.
I don't know if she's much for the public eye, but we'll see.
You can invite her up.
Okay.
On the motion by Counselor Knight, all those with favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Offered by Counselor Knight and Counselor Caraviallo. Be it resolved that the Methadon City Council sends its condolences to the family of Grace Richmond, longtime Methadon resident and election inspector for the city of Medford. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Ms. Richmond will be sorely missed in our community. She was a member of our faith-based community here in West Medford with relationships with St. Rayfield's Church, and she was also an election official here in the city of Medford who gave a great deal of her time dedicated to the public to make sure that our elections moved smoothly and made sure that Clerk Finn had an easier time on Election Day because of the hard work that she did. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to extend my deep condolences to her family and ask that the council join me in doing so.
Thank you. Counselor Del Rosso.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you.
If we can say it for a moment of silence, please?
Mr. President, while we're on this suspension.
Counselor Del Rosso.
May I take this opportunity to kindly recommend with the change of leadership in our body that yourselves and Counselor Marks be, take the helm as being the two spokespersons for this body with regards to a legal matter pending in the courts.
Thank you. We will, we will make that change, and I will notify the attorney, the Counselor Marks. I'd like to keep Counselor Longo on there, where she is an attorney, and say, neither one of us are attorneys, and I think we can use Counselor Longo's legal expertise.
I found that the attorney that we're paying to engage brings great legal expertise to this.
Thank you. On the motion, Counselor Del Rosso. Counselor Longo Kern.
I just wanted to know what the resolution was, because I too, I mean, it's been quite a while I've been dealing with it.
I think currently, yourself and Counselor Del Rosso are the go-to person for the suit in regards to law of the street.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I'd be happy to stay on and communicate with.
Right, so we would just change it to myself and Counselor Marks, and say, if you wouldn't mind.
I'd love to stay on, please.
If you wouldn't mind staying on, so, if, you know, neither one of us are attorneys, and yes, we have the solicitor, but.
We don't, we don't have the solicitor.
That's right, we don't, we only have the.
We have the attorney that engaged.
Yes, yes.
Converse.
Thank you. Yes, on the motion by Counselor Del Rosso.
As amended?
As amended, by Counselor Caraviallo. All those with favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes. Records of the meeting of January 10, 2017, passed by Counselor Del Rosso. Counselor Del Rosso, how have you found those records?
Mr. President, I've found them to be in order, but I feel that I must point out that in brief time I return to the floor, this is the second time that I've had a court session of this fashion, and I hope that this is a valid case. They have ruled there.
We will, it's been duly noted. Motion to adjourn.